I looked this morning and it wasn't there to get into it.
I think we're all present. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Brian Geezy.
Present.
Doug Hughes. David Schritt.
Here.
Ryan Mahan.
Present.
And I am here.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a virtue card reading.
Reliability. Okay, that's a good one. Reliability means that others can depend on you. You keep your commitments and give your best to every job. You are responsible. You don't forget and you don't need to be reminded. Other people can relax knowing things are in your reliable hands. You're practicing reliability when you make promises you can keep, really care about doing what you promise, return things you borrow, plan ahead, do your best and finish on time, find another way if obstacles occur. Affirmation, I am reliable. I keep my promises. Others can depend on me. Nothing can stop me from giving my best.
Thank you, Pat. And then we have some guidelines that we developed as a board of education. The guidelines are with an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results and high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank our help here tonight with the video. We appreciate the time. And I'd like to open the floor up to public comments at this time. Is there anybody that has some public comments? Quiet crowd back there.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I noticed that on our agenda for the advance, we're going to be talking a little bit about communication. And at the convention that we just came back from last week, I went to a session on communication and I'm going to have some information that I brought back from there about communication. So just so you're aware that I have some things that will come up.
Good. We'll get that on the agenda. Very good. Thank you. Showcasing schools and student learning. The first item that we have is Mrs. Gaffney and eighth graders present on the Washington DC track.
And before Ms. Gaffney starts, I just, I want to just give her a quick introduction as an extremely hardworking staff member there that's put in a lot of extra time in planning and has tackled some unexpected, you know, challenges with planning a trip like this, but nothing like that's going to stop Kayla from accomplishing her goals. So Kayla, I just want to thank you for working on this together. And here's Kayla Gaffney, our seventh and eighth grade social studies teacher to put a proposal together for you.
All right. So I've created a PowerPoint presentation and this is the one that I showed to the parents at one of our very first meetings. So I proposed a trip to Washington DC from May 18th, which is a Friday, to May 21st, which is a Monday. We would leave Thursday at midnight and then we would arrive back Tuesday early morning. So it's a quick trip, but we have a lot planned. So what I told the parents is that last year on spring break, I had the opportunity to go out to Washington DC and I fell in love with it, being the history person I am. And I realized my students needed to see this too. So I loved seeing history come to life and learn about how America came to be the country it is today. And I chose this particular tour because I wanted to be able to share my love of history with students and see the benefit in traveling and how education ties in with it.
So imagine a social studies teacher taking a vacation to tour her.
Picture school trip.
Yeah.
Her curriculum.
It was better than this. It was amazing. Here are some pictures that I took and these are some of the sites that we'll be able to go see. So the Abraham Lincoln Memorial, which is on the National Mall. George Washington's house is in the upper right-hand corner. We have the Library of Congress. And then my favorite building was the National Archives Building, which is where our Declaration and our Constitution is kept. So I'm very excited for the kids to see the document that we've studied a lot in class, but seeing it actually in person is a whole different story. I teared up. I'm such a history nerd. I loved it. And then this is just one of the parents. The experience is everything. Educational travel is a vital part of a complete education. It expands views, promotes understanding, and provides firsthand experiences of the classroom lessons that we have done. And here's more highlights. We're going to go to the National Mall, Jefferson Memorial, Supreme Courthouse, and visit many of the Smithsonian museums one afternoon. And I also tied it to some of our standards and it hits many of the social studies standards, but just some of the historical ones, looking at primary sources, describing the relationships between different events, analyzing important political values, identifying significant events, and describe how history can be organized are just a couple of the historical standards. And then on the next slide, I have the political ones as well. So looking at the actual Bill of Rights, Constitution, Declaration, how our government is formed, being able to see those buildings firsthand. And here's just a sample itinerary. Day one, we'd get there, we'd meet our teacher, have dinner, and then do the Washington DC evening guided tour. And then day two, we would go to different landmarks. So Mount Vernon, go to the Capitol, Supreme Court House, go to the Holocaust Museum, and then have dinner. Date three is going to be going to Arlington National Cemetery and then visiting some of the Smithsonian museums, going to the Library of Congress, then Ford Theater. And then on our way out, we're going to stop at the National Archives Building. And so what's included is round trip transportation, free overnight stays, an hotel, breakfast daily, except on our arrival day, and then dinner daily, except on our departure day. We have full-time services of a professional tour guide, guided sightseeing tours. All prices to attractions are paid for. And then we have an overnight security chaperone. So that way we can kind of sleep at night and have someone that'll be out in the hallway making sure kids don't get out. And that's just on the travel plans. So I think that pretty much sums it up.
So what we're, what Ms. Gaffney is coming to the board with today is just an ask for approval for out-of-state travel. And also, you know, she's been working with other school districts in the area and they're, they're building up to a number of committed participants in that trip. I think they've got, they need two more to get the next break or to avoid a price increase in that, if I'm saying that correctly. And so what we're coming to you today for is to ask for the official approval and ask who's going to sign up to be one of those limited people.
We got room on the bus.
What's the cost for me?
Right there.
Well, for adults, it's.
No, this is, this date works. I think.
For adults, it's nine forty-eight right now.
Okay.
If anybody wants us, I know. Well, that's what we take you.
Right, Pat? No, in his life.
The reason I, you know, when I, when I first saw this, I got to make it, I don't know. Our senior class was the very first senior class to schedule a Washington DC trip. Okay? This was back in nineteen seventy-four and I couldn't go. And we had, out of our hundred and ten students that we had in our senior class, I think there were only like four or five kids that didn't go. And I had to be one of them because I had to work. I'm going to be close to retirement at that.
There we go.
Full circle.
Yes.
It may happen. I've got to make a little bit of money in between, but.
You just couldn't go then.
Right.
Not yet.
So it may happen.
Okay.
I will let you know.
All the information.
All right.
So anybody in the viewing audience that might be interested should contact you at the Melsville.
You know, just as Clint said, we just want to congratulate Kayla on the work that you've done on this and the passion that you have and, you know, knowing full well that the students will never forget this. So.
And that's my goal is just to give a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to some kids who will not really live in Wisconsin.
How many of the, how many of the students are going from AMS?
From AMS, there's twenty. And then there's eight from Port Edwards at this point.
Okay.
So how many more?
I was just curious. And we've got another school that we're going to tap to and see if they'd be interested.
How many more spots are available?
We have fifty-five spots on the bus, but we need two more to hit that magic point.
Okay.
Not having to.
Good, you know.
Very good.
Thank you. We'll look for an update when you come back.
Yep. And I guess, you know, as far as just the approval from the board, that sheet itself has required chaperones and all that satisfied. So as a board, there we go. So, right? We don't have to.
Yeah, I think we should make a motion, no?
That's under other board work. There is an agenda item for that.
Okay.
So it's up to you if you want to make a motion.
We'll do it now.
Okay.
Eighth grade field trip to Washington DC. I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you very much, Kayla.
Thank you, guys.
CWSA update.
Well, that's me.
Hi. Welcome.
Yeah. We met on the fifteenth and we discussed the upcoming possible grant. That grant, we have not received the guidelines for it yet. They're still in the process of writing. So in the meantime, we need to find a direction that we're going to go when we do get those guidelines, which way we're going to go with it. So we put together, Clint put together a survey that would go out to our third grade parents and fourth grade parents to see if there's, what's the interest for building the school. So that is going to be going out and then we'll collect information and use that for guiding us as we write the grant. Let's see. And the other thing that came up was the checking account that Lynn has questioned, not questioned, excuse me, has asked about. And we just want to let everybody know that there isn't a checking account for the school and it is open to anyone to come in and check its accountability and where we're at. So we're letting you know it's there and open to perusing.
Yep. Thank you very much. And any upcoming events?
There is. I think it's in February.
Okay.
The student showcasing.
All right. Those are great showcases.
We just had one on Thursday.
Last Thursday, right?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you very much. And any questions from?
Thank you for your work on the CWSA team, yeah?
Yeah. For your representation here as well. Any other questions from board members? Very good. Thank you. At this point, we are going to review a presentation on committee work of potential tracks forward slash football facility upgrades. Darren's going to provide a little bit of background. You know, why don't we go ahead and make some introductions? I myself served on this committee. Like we've been involved there and I think our first meeting was April. And Darren, Mr. Darren Olson has been spearheading this and I will turn it over to you guys.
Thank you. I am Darren Olson. Ms. Counselor is with me and also Ross Rettler from Rettler Corporation. We're going to just go through a quick slideshow and talk about some needs that we have found in our facilities, our athletic facilities. First, I just, most of you know me. I've been around a long time. Former school board member, born and raised here in Nacousses, graduated here. My boys have gone through here. My mom used to work here. So I'm pretty much Nacousses all the way through.
We graduated together.
Yeah, we graduated together. And the DC trip was wonderful, isn't it?
Oh, definitely.
Absolutely. You'll never forget that stuff. So I just wanted to, you know, introduce myself as that. I have been very active in the school district for ten years, eleven years. I've been asked to be in a lot of different capacities. I most recently was on the Nacousses Athletic Association Board as president for six years. And so just so everybody knows who I am, Mr. Rettler will talk about his company in a little bit. So, and you all know Ms. Counselor Olson. So just an overview of what we're going to do today. We're just going to go through a few slides of what our current status of our facilities are. And generally, we're talking about our football and track and softball facilities. Some of the educational benefits that are derived from sports and student athletes, for student athletes. And then how the committee came to be and kind of show a plan that the committee has looked at and then what the next steps may be.
So I just want to highlight where we are currently with our facilities. Our track was installed in nineteen eighty-nine. That was the last time that it was updated. The average lifespan of a blacktop track is fifteen to twenty years. So we have exceeded that quite a bit. It lacks the appropriate drainage, which causes it to upheave and then have to be constantly patched and replaced in different places. So it's caused the separation of the rubber surface from the blacktop underneath of it. The field events are located in four separate areas. So if you're trying to watch this in our limited seating, you are not able to see all of the athletes. And if you're somebody who's trying to watch throwers compete in two different areas, then maybe a pole vault or a long jump. You just can't see it all. So we don't have a whole lot of seating. There are no bathrooms. Anybody who comes needs to go inside to use the restroom. There are no lights. So in the spring, we would have to start, when we hosted track two years ago, we had to start actually a half an hour earlier than what it was scheduled in order to make sure that we got it in on time. It lacks the requirement size-wise to even host a larger event where you could make some money, like a regional or sectional event, which means that our teams have traveled to Freedom, Tomahawk, and another one that was two plus hours away. So our teams are traveling a lot further because we don't even have the option of putting in to host an event like that. And we can't host another track meet. It's so bad that I've already told the conference that when we come up again in five years, we're not able to host. So somebody else will have to host. Just our, so the kids that will graduate, our freshman class and actually our sophomore class, will have never competed at home in a track meet, which means that every, you know, two days a week, they're traveling, probably forty-five minutes is the closest we'll go for a track meet.
It's almost, it's almost impossible for them to even practice on the surface.
It is. It really, it's not very safe, to be honest. And I, I think, what other athletic team do we have that we would say it's okay to not ever host an event at home in your entire high school career?
I'd like to add one thing too. Despite this, our boys' track is seven-time conference champion?
Seven-time in a row.
In a row.
Yeah.
Due to running away meets every meet. So we have a very long history of exceptional track athletes through our programs. We have many that have competed at the college level. We have some right now that are competing at the college level. We've had state champions. We've had state championship teams. So I think I echo Megan's. It's, it's interesting how the, how this has kind of fallen through the cracks since nineteen eighty-nine.
And this is not a team where there's only seven. We have more than fifty kids signed up to compete in boys' and girls' track this year. So it does impact a large number of our student athletes. As far as a softball field is concerned, the fence is not regulation. It is not safe. There are no foul poles. The dugouts are, the one dugout had to be replaced several years ago. So the dugouts don't match and the ones that are older are really inadequate. They're kind of falling apart. The field itself is not handicap accessible. There are no bathrooms, no lights, and a concession stand really needs to be completely redone. It's very small and doesn't really allow for anything other than some popcorn and some candy to be sold out. The roof, I believe, also needs to be replaced sometimes due to smell. One thing I want to highlight about softball is that when it comes to track, it's both genders. But when we talk about football and baseball, if we looked at the scope of our outdoor athletic facilities, primarily we ended up talking about boys' sports, but it's important to highlight that softball, who doesn't get a whole lot of attention from us, deserves that attention, deserves to be considered when we're looking at trying to do anything here. Not only is it the right thing to do, it is equity standpoint, to not consider them, to not look at this would be a tight on my feelings. Football and baseball, as you guys know, share fields. Holland Field has converted back and forth from football to baseball. We will host between eighty and ninety events a year on that grass. So it is a stress to the surface. It is also built near wetland, so it has caused some shift in the playing surface. If you've been to a football or baseball game, you can see it. It's visible. The crown of the field is not level. The lighting was replaced a few years ago. We need several bulbs that have burned out. Also, the lighting casts a shadow and we'll get complaints from time to time about the shadows cast on the football field. Sharing the surface creates holes from the fences of the baseball field, which can be a danger to our football players. And then the bleachers are placed on the infield surface, which is not good for the surface of the baseball field to have to incur that it sits there for several months. And then you also get a lot of little kids who run around at baseball games, who end up in those dugouts or tear up the infield. It is really hard to try to manage kids to stay off of those surfaces, to keep them in the condition that our baseball team has worked really hard to make sure that they're at. It's hard to keep them in that condition in the fall when football is being played there.
Megan, if I could add one thing, sharing the surface creates the holes where the fence posts go in. I'd also, where the football players walk on the sidelines, ends up to be divested and the water sits in there. And I work on the baseball field quite a bit, as a lot of you probably know. It, it takes us in baseball nearly all year just to get it to grow grass again and then football starts and it goes back and forth constantly. But those are, those become, especially behind second base, that becomes a safety issue because it's such a divot that players sometimes end up tripping over because it's just a huge divot in there. We've tried to fill it over years and it's just, it's, it's an expense all the time.
When it comes to our student athletes, it's also the middle, the middle school utilizes the facilities that the high school uses primarily. They'll use the football field. They'll use either baseball field. Both softball fields are used for middle school. The track is used. So it's benefiting our kids as early as we start them to the time that they're graduating from high school.
From what I'm hearing, basically we have substandard facilities.
We have about the worst facilities in the conference, if I'm honest. And I've, I've been to all of the facilities in our conference. Our indoor facilities are quality. They are really nice. Our outdoor facilities are substandard for sure.
Again, I have, I have athletes that have played, the last, my boys have all played three sports. I travel to all them as either part of a coaching staff or a parent. And we've traveled a lot of other places also for collegiate baseball and such. And I do echo her, especially the softball and track areas. Our, our facilities are lacking compared to others. We had the very nice opportunity to go up, our Level One playoff game was in Osceola. They built a brand-new facility three years ago. It was absolutely beautiful. Their football field was absolutely beautiful. And their, our size or less. So it was a beautiful field that you have the game in. And so it was a trip to go there.
I guess I shouldn't be offensive to the baseball field. The field looks great. And it is one of the better baseball fields in the conference. The rest of our facilities are. Soccer is currently played at AMS. That field was created before we had a high school team. That surface has two different types of grass on it. It is really thick in certain places and really thin in others. It is difficult to keep up with the mowing and the watering because it wasn't really created as a place for high school sports to be held on. There are no bathrooms or concession stands. We're also looking to offer both boys' and girls' soccer, which means that that facility will be utilized more. And AMS also plays all of their games on that facility. Just wanted to point out a few educational benefits to high school sports. Participation in school-sponsored athletics shows a two percent increase in math and science scores and a five percent increase in bachelor's degree attainment. Student athletes are likelier to have higher GPAs and better attendance. Involvement in co-curriculars promotes a better sense of belonging to a school and a community and especially eases the transition between freshman year and, or middle school and high school, which is something that we know at high school really matters as far as a student's long-term high school success, that transition between eighth grade and their freshman year. They engage in less risky behavior, reduce alcohol, drug, and cigarette use. And also, studies have shown student athletes or students who are participating in co-curriculars, there's a reduction in teen suicide among those students. And they're more likely to be successful after high school because of a lot of the soft skills that are taught and practiced and repeated in high school sports. So we're looking at the whole student and not just the athletics side of it.
I would, we did put a slide in, but a note that I made, in addition to the educational benefits, there's also community benefits. And I didn't go into a big list and such, but at the current time, our fields are already hosting Pee-wee football, youth soccer. We have rugby comes in and plays. We already have community members walking, using our track areas. So there's a lot to be said about what a facility could bring to the community also and raise the level of facilities for all the community. Maybe there's other events that we can hold, we can, could be held if we had a different kind of facilities.
They really tend to be the face of small communities like ours. Their athletic programs tend to be what the community rallies around. If you come here on a Friday night in the fall, there are a ton of people here. It really brings the community together. So it is something that just promotes a better sense of a community and school connection.
So how this came to be is as part of the Athletic Association, we were always looking for our fundraisers. And over time, I was there six years and I don't know, I think we had two track meets, two high school track meets in six years or something like that. So a lot of times I would ask questions and I would get community members and students and people asking me, why? Why don't we have our, our track meets here? And of course, I didn't know why. So I kept bringing it up to all people and people would contact me back. And so we ended up putting a group together to. And so we ended up putting a group together to see, you know, what's going on here, and to see if there is a possibility or a project that could be undertaking to help at this. And also at this time, we knew that the track is to the point of you can't have a meet on it. So that was already coming to play. And then also, another, when that land was purchased, there was kind of a landlocked area there, or you couldn't really expand. Well, with that purchase of that land, that also provides a little bit more breathing room there for a possible project. So the people that were in, in the committee, were Superintendent Terry and Lynn. We had the high school principals and athletic directors with us. We invited the track, the football, the baseball coaches. At the beginning, we did invite a softball coach because we didn't know we were going to look at the softball fields. So that is why the coach was not initially brought into the fold. We did start meeting in April, and we've been meeting periodically, on and off since then. And the next person we want to talk to is Ross Rettler. He is a corporation that specializes in bringing these projects together and building these projects. So he will talk a little bit more about himself and what we have to show you.
Great. Thank you, guys. I want to take the opportunity to thank the Board of Education here at Nacusa, and also the School of District for the opportunity to be here tonight. Very exciting project. Yeah, like Darren said, it was April of two thousand seventeen that we first had the opportunity to come together collaboratively with the committee and Rettler Corporation to look at your vision and future needs as part of your facilities. It's been very exciting, and we're very excited about the vision that we've come up with here. So before I jump into the master plan, I just want to give you guys a brief overview of Rettler Corporation. Rettler Corporation was established in nineteen eighty-nine in Stevens Point, Wisconsin. We are a multi-disciplinary group of landscape architects, civil engineers, land surveyors, and construction managers. And we provide services in sports architecture, site design and engineering, and land surveying, and really pushing your project from vision through reality, being there all the way through to making sure you get exactly what you need as part of these processes. We're currently designing or managing construction of several facilities throughout the state, and have had the opportunity to work on a lot of really nice award-winning facilities throughout the Midwest. So I guess with that, we'd like to jump right into the master plan and go through the vision that you've come up with. In looking at your plan, really, there are four primary elements as part of the master plan that we discussed. And initially, your football field is located in another facility. What we really wanted to do is create a cohesive complex where all sports would be accommodated as part of that. So the four main elements as part of it would be the football field, track and field facility being one, upgrades to the softball facility being two, a new multi-use practice facility being the third, and then a twenty-four-foot, two-way drive access scenario that would provide linkages from the middle school to the high school, pedestrian and vehicular access. So to get into the specifics of the track and field facility, what we've done here is we've reconfigured the track and field, brand-new track and field, eight lanes, nine sprint lanes, a width that's going to provide opportunities for full-size soccer and football, allowing you to host those regional and sectional events that they were talking about previously. We've also provided opportunities for new field events, long jump, triple jump, being on the east end of the facility, pole vault on the west end, and then a new high jump area that will be on the north end of the field, the track. Also included as part of the track and field facility would be new lighting, athletic field lighting for not only the track and field, but also the field events as well. An upgraded grandstand and press box, a grandstand that would accommodate roughly fifteen hundred observers, and then the new press box. And then as part of the grandstand, what we looked at is because of your storage needs, there's new options in terms of enclosing that grandstand to provide those options for storage. Located at the northwest corner is a new, really nice, everything's together in terms of your throwing events, with shot put and disc all together in one area. A real exciting part of these projects that we've seen being, you know, the entries and the people spaces as part of them, we've seen really great things. And what we've done is showed a new plaza, hard-surface decorative concrete plaza space with a new entry, an overhead entry and ticket booth, and then a new twenty-five-hundred-square-foot concession restroom facility that would provide a great opportunity, not only for your track and field facility, but also the softball facility. So moving into the softball facility, I think one of the main, primary things we wanted to do is provide access to the softball users as part of that concession restroom. So what we started to show is a new access, a raised concrete, elevated concrete crosswalk over your new drive to provide ADA pedestrian access north to the softball fields. As part of the softball fields, the primary upgrades that we're showing right now are new fencing and new backstops around each one of the fields, irrigation upgrades to the outfield, new infield, new dugouts, and then athletic field lighting as part of the south softball field. Moving on to the third item, that twenty-four-foot drive access we talked about, really creating a linkage now, like we had said, to the high school and the middle school, providing that key access. You're really looking at providing new options for access to your practice facilities as well. This would be in discussion, this would be used for not only maintenance access, but also for bus drop-offs and stuff like that. The fourth primary item would be the upgraded, this area of the parcel of land that you had purchased recently, would be the upgraded, or the new practice, full-size soccer and football practice facility. This would be an irrigated, under-drained, and amended soil scenario where you'd have premier playable fields for your practice facilities. Those are the four primary elements. The next slide, I think, you know, what we want to show you here is an opportunity, you know, these facilities, obviously, they don't build themselves. There's always a challenge in terms of fundraising, but really what we start to show here is just an option that we've found great success with in terms of fundraising, are these entry statements. And really, just to show you an option for a possible donor opportunity or a naming right opportunity, so.
I had, I just did some recent searching about other districts who have recently done this or are in the process, and these are the ones I found in a very short manner, I'm sure there's many more. Wapaka just got finished with theirs, that Rettler Corporation did, I believe. Marshfield you guys are doing?
Correct, yes, Mawston as well.
In Mawston you did. I know West Salem is in the process of doing a whole, they did everything, football field, softball, they did everything pretty much like this kind of project. Wisconsin Rapids-Lincoln, I believe they just approved eight point four million just for a pool. Wrights, Talon, Pulaski, Kiwanee are smaller areas that have also done this kind of projects. Well, no, you know, they're not ten years old or anything.
Just to add quickly to that, one primary thing I'd like to say is, working with smaller districts, we've had a great bit of success working with, you know, people like Cameron, Stanley Boyd, Wisconsin. These are communities of seven hundred people that have really come together and put together some really nice facilities. So smaller doesn't mean anything, it's really how you go about going out there and looking for options, so.
So is there any questions for us as a committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Parking facilities. Do the current parking facilities for the high school and middle school suffice for fifteen hundred people coming into a stag area there?
So I think when we originally talked about the master plan, if you guys look up to the north here, we had provided an option for future parking if necessary. But based on the discussions that we had had, the current number of people, based on the number of stands that would be provided, would be acceptable. I think, keeping in mind that this area was specifically provided for future parking if necessary.
The one thing for...
And also, there was a, there's a piece there north that would be available also. We've talked about that also.
One option as well, with that road and sidewalk going to AMS, we could utilize the rear parking lot of AMS for the summer events, you know. But yes, that original parking lot, make the softball field, you know, those are things that could happen.
Which I'm not sure.
Yep.
Are locker rooms into this too? I didn't hear any mention.
No locker rooms, they would still be, they'll be the new, the same varsity locker rooms as we built with the other addition.
We actually have adequate locker room facilities, most places.
Well, I was wondering about that, because I was just in there, you know, and I thought, okay, this, you know, I was thinking, well, this doesn't look too bad, but I didn't hear any mention of it, so that's why I asked, Aaron.
Most places actually don't have, we have four locker rooms available. Anytime a team comes, I can put them, you know, opposite gender, varsity, or either one downstairs. A lot of places don't have the four locker rooms, so we're pretty good there. The one thing that I know would be really appreciative, or appreciated by the people that I work with, is having the officials locker room located at the football field. We don't have that right now, and so when I've hosted events, I set them up at the picnic table.
With twenty-five-hundred square feet, Megan, yeah, I think a lot of the facilities that we've seen, that footprint for a concession restroom facility would provide you the opportunity for some smaller refreeze spaces.
Yep, and it would provide some privacy if there was an athletic training need, if a student had gotten hurt at the event and they needed some privacy while they're dealing with that. That option is available in a way that it isn't here right now.
Good question.
Help me with some clarity around the football, soccer, practice facility right there. So the one immediately, yeah, in the middle there, that's going to be a dual practice surface, and the one on the left is a soccer, like game surface?
I think what we like to show typically from a multi-use standpoint, we show striping for both, just really to show how they would work. Basically, what we're showing is a full-size, three hundred and sixty feet long by two hundred and twenty-five feet in width, soccer facility can be accommodated, and then you could also put football practice on there as well. It's multi-use however you'd like to configure.
But the main football field would be configured at the right specs, so the soccer would be on the main field.
So in terms of practice facilities for soccer and football, those are going to occur in that middle field?
Yep, one would be a soccer practice field, and the other would be a football practice field.
And where are the soccer games being played on the...
They will be played in the vicinity.
That's why the track is configured, the shape it is? It's a wider track configuration, yep.
Which then also provides some equity and facilities to hopefully, which will be a thriving soccer program for both boys and girls at that point.
Did you have a question?
I did. I'll confess, people, did you talk to them? They are looking at using that becoming the next Compton Fest area for the rest of the...
I did talk to them, and they, they were not, they stopped pursuing it. Doesn't mean they wouldn't in the future, but...
Could provide actually the excellent opportunity to pass.
Could, yeah.
Any other questions? Any software comments?
Have we got a price tag on this?
That's always the question, isn't it?
I think, you know, what we're, you know, cost of this time, you know, there's a lot to be determined by the phasing and scope of this project. You know, if it's done in multiple phases, there's additional costs to bringing in the equipment and, you know, setting up. And, you know, if it's all done at once, the equipment's here, you're moving all the earth, and, you know, if you do it in different segments, you're pulling them out. At this time, what the committee is seeking is just the permission from the board to start fundraising. That's kind of what we're looking at. And again, the pricing, you know, there are numbers out there for what this costs, but it really, it's so different based upon the type of phasing that we do, so we need to...
So if we did it all at once, give us a ballpark figure.
I don't have that information.
So as Mr. Beazey's saying, one reason we're here is we want to get a permission from the board to start fundraising in the name of this project. And we also want to start developing that timeline for the fundraising. As a committee, we have, we are prepared to be able to start serious fundraising by April first. It'll take up to then to develop a plan and the materials to present to corporations and individuals. So we're looking at the private funding is where we need to start.
Can you, are you planning on having a dollar figure approximately at least by that time so that people know where they're going?
And what the goal is?
What the goal is, yeah.
Yes, we'll have numbers by then, and then we'll get...
Because if we don't have a goal, we don't know where we're going.
That is correct, yes. We will definitely have a goal, and that'll all be set up in a presentation, and that'll, all that, how that works, all come out with that committee. We can sit down again and work out that fundraising presentations, and see where we need to be and what levels donations would be. We're going to be looking at talking to corporations and things like that, so. That's why we'd like to get the blessing of the board, so we're not doing something that is not warranted, so. Before we start.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Am I supposed to call people?
Okay, good. Two things here. First of all, Holland Field had nothing, there's no adjustments to Holland Field at all.
Not in this case, no.
Not in this case, okay, so it would just be, that's just getting turned over to strictly a baseball field.
That would be the plan, yes.
That would be the plan at this point. And then Megan, and is this, is this what your committee wants? This design right here, is this, is there any other options that you were pursuing?
We had explored just a couple, you know, what different things could look like, and really talking to a lot of the coaches of what are your needs? What does a quality facility look like to you, especially around track? Track has a couple different options, so including the track coach in the discussion to say, what is, what is your optimum facility look like? How many sprint lanes do we need? What are the dimensions that you think? Where do you think these events should be located and really included, him in the conversation?
But I'm looking at like this whole thing here with the practice fields and all that. This is, this is the goal, this is what you thought, is what we need.
That's what we've been working on since then. We started, we started out with what the needs were, what issues we'd followed.
And where to develop from there.
Kind of where to develop, and bring a lot of experience.
I think the big thing was it really, this project really started out as a track and field facility, looking at your track and fields, and as part of the process, we always ask, let's at least think big picture. Let's look at all the options that your district has, and making, you know, spaces like this are very flexible spaces in how you're developing them. So I think, you know, from an infrastructure standpoint, we're maintaining, we're upgrading what's there. We're upgrading a track that's currently there, and we just look at a more flexible space in the future, so.
So what's happening with the current soccer field, is that just going to be not used, or...
The middle school.
Yeah, I would think that it would be utilized by the middle school. But a lot of our games are overlapped this year, and we ended up having to reschedule games. Either the middle school did, or I did, in a way that if the middle school area was their own, they didn't get to practice out there ever, and then we wouldn't have to compete for space and play games.
I think we need to keep in mind also that there are maintenance costs to this project as well. And these are ongoing costs that are going to be added to the district that we need to consider. Not that I want to put a damper on that, because I think it's a great plan, I really, I really like it. But we do have to consider what it's going to cost the district perpetually. Also, Darren, could you just keep me in the loop on the fundraising timeline? Because we're a United Way organization, and there's blackout periods, so I'll need to know that, okay?
I absolutely will.
Thank you.
Maintenance costs were a subject of some of the priorities that were brought up. They brought up those costs, which were, it was good for decision-making.
Yeah, and I just wanted the board to know that there are going to be costs to the district for that.
Brian, are you saying maintenance from what we've got now compared to what we will have? Because we've got maintenance costs now.
Right, you'd have more field surface facility than, you know, what needs to be updated in a way that we don't.
I think that the thing that we need, you know, as a board, you know, is do we need improvements? And, you know, do we give the go-ahead for these individuals to begin fundraising for what, you know, what facilities would make Nacusa look proud? And, you know, a direct reflection on our schools and our community.
And what's right for your community?
And I got to think about the kids as well.
You bet.
I think about kids that can't run track right now, that, you know, we will never host a home, home... I think about kids that can't run track right now. That, you know, we will never post a home, home, uh, meet. I, I traveled to Freedom two years ago to watch the regionals. What a, three years ago. Fantastic facility. And Freedom is a smaller town than, than we are. And you come around, you go on the parking lot of that school and here's this fantastic field. And, uh, I'd like, I wanna be proud of what we have here.
Most of them just upgraded, I believe they just did.
It's a very similar process to exactly what you would be doing here as part of the track and field facility. I think what's important to understand is we have options here. We're here to help you guys. From a phasing standpoint, you know, when we look at dollars and we talk real dollars to, to develop projects, we can look at phasing it for what would be reasonable at the right time, so. We're here to help you with that, so.
Brian, did you, Mr. Gray?
Mr. Gray, just quick question when doing this, like, they, you send the presentation, the average track lasts how long? Fifteen to twenty years?
Fifteen to twenty years.
How long would this one last? Same amount of time or?
So that, I think what Megan was referring to is the base and sub-base, meaning the base course and the asphalt. Um, when it comes to the actual track surfacing itself, there's two different primary products that are out there right now, it's latex and urethane. Uh, the urethane product from a year expectancy standpoint, uh, there are some dollars associated with upgrades in the future. However, you have the option to extend the life roughly threefold for the, for the track. Latex systems, you're getting right around eight years or so. Out of them, eight to ten years before you need to peel them off and, and relay the latex. With urethane, you have the option of laying the basement and then bringing a structural spray in over the top of the basement in the future, and you can apply that twice. So that's every eight years to bring in structural spray. So, there's options, there's a lot of options.
But that would be an eight-year, nine-year cycle instead of the fifteen, twenty years, because?
No, I was talking base, not.
That's kinda what I was referring to, yeah. She's talking base and sub-base. Base, base course, the rock underneath and then the asphalt on top of that. And then you have a, a, a map that goes on top of the asphalt for the actual track surfacing, so.
So I guess I'm looking for, I guess they're looking for a general consensus that the board would give them approval for beginning fundraising for this. We're not gonna do a motion, but I'd like to see a consensus if it's something that we want.
We need it.
I think everybody knows that.
We can't, you know, no choice.
The facilities are at the end of their life, in many cases.
We could just go tear the track up and clean the track surface down. It is what it is, and we keep switching football, baseball.
But the way, the way the drainage is right now.
Right, it's not gonna, it.
Right.
It's gonna be revisited every time, so, yeah. I'm for it.
So on behalf of the community, thank you for your work there and giving this.
Darren, you know, Mr. Rutter, you know, for your efforts and the needs assessment, you know, I, I truly wasn't aware of a lot of these deficiencies until that needs assessment was complete. And the thing that really strikes me as well is the equity issue that you brought up, Megan, with regards to the, to the women's, the girls' softball. And that's something that is really important to me. So, I, uh, I think we can give our blessings to the fundraising. Any concerns? We're all on board.
I'll be in contact with the committee members and we'll start working on that. And again, uh, our objective or our timeline, uh, we would like to be, uh, hitting the fundraising, uh, as of April first. Um, so we'd like to get everything ready to go before that and be ready to go, uh.
Maybe you could give the board an update possibly in March or early in April.
Whatever you would like, we could sure do that. We could give the presentation to you in case anybody likes to write a check, you know?
Okay, we thank you for your time.
Thank you for having us in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I just roll right into whatever I?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, I've had several coaching positions posted recently. I've been able to close all but one of them. And even in that position, I have someone who's qualified and interested. So I'm really hopeful, um, moving forward with the several track coaching positions that we've had open, um, softball, and then soccer. So those are the positions I've got posted. By the end of next week, all of my spring sport coaches, um, should be getting their contracts. And then I am ready to issue contracts for the fall as well. New head coach, or I will be by the end of next week, new head coach for soccer. The rest of the sports head coaches have agreed to stay. And things that have actually went really well in the fall, um, in cross-country volleyball and football. There might be some minor, um, coaching changes for assisting coaches based on their interest and whether or not they're staying in the area. Things should be ready to roll, so I just wanted to let you know that the spring will be set by the end of next week and ready to go with the fall a little earlier than it was last year, so.
Fantastic. Don't know, don't know, I didn't, not really germane to the coaching in general, but with pursuing co-op opportunities, are we, are we doing all, you know, we're really pushing for it? I've seen such success in the, in the sports that we are co-opting. I don't know if that's something that.
I have pursued some co-ops with ports. I have not been told no, but I have not been told yes yet either. The particular co-op that I'm really pushing for is girls' soccer, which is offered in the spring. So we would have to apply by June first of this year for a soccer co-op next year. I would like to be able to offer both boys and girls and have their own premier seasons. I surveyed all of our students and the eighth grade class of who was interested in participating in whatever sports we don't currently offer. Girls' soccer being one of them. We should have about ten to twelve committed girls who are ready to play either eighth grade to junior year currently. Um, that is not enough for a team. I need a solid sixteen, as low as I can go in order to be able to offer. Several years ago, we had a girls' spring soccer club. It was prior to applying for WIA status. We ended up having to cancel a season, and teams are still scoring the break. Uh, because they added us to their WIA schedule. You only get so many games. Scheduling non-conference games can be difficult. And so when we canceled an entire season, um, you get kinda blacklisted for a little while. Much like a conference opponent canceled their, their varsity football season. It doesn't, doesn't play out well to everybody else that you play. So, um, we're putting some distance between that. Those same schools have seen us be able to offer a solid boys' program, and I think that we could make some headway. Port has not said no, but they have not said yes. They surveyed their community. He has about six to eight girls who would like to play soccer. The only thing that we're not really sure about right now is the impact from the girls currently playing softball or track to then switching to spring soccer. So it will, it could impact our softball, it could impact their softball. My guess is they're not gonna say, yes, we'll co-op their soccer and then not be able to offer softball because they've lost too many girls, so.
I, I thank you very much. I apologize for putting you on the spot.
No, that's okay.
You know, just opportunity to give not only our students, but all students, be it in the surrounding communities, the opportunities to play in the sports that they would like to play.
So you guys are aware too, I approached Port about a, a co-op in golf. We have a, a golf program that won their first conference championship last year, Joel.
Yeah.
They have a few students who are interested in, in golfing.
Fantastic.
A co-op with them would be easy because it's not hosted at the school. Really, I'm just kind of inviting them, trying to entice them to see whatever else they can bring our way. And they have some kids who, whose parents are really interested in seeing that happen. That also needs to be applied for by June first for next year. Can't happen this year.
Thank you for your work. Any questions? Okay, you've been very patient. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank, thank.
Thank you, Megan.
Yep.
So, before winter break, we had an activity day where some students went and watched movies. They got to sign up for what they could do. Others played, uh, some games in the gym. Uh, another option was painting rooms. They painted five rooms in the upper hallway, which completes all of the upper hallway painted. So we have one wall in each room. Uh, the teachers got to choose their colors, and it just adds a little bit more interest in the classroom. So they also got community service hours for that, and it was just a good opportunity for everybody to help benefit their school. We're all getting some time.
Come by and check that out.
We have a C D Hawkins dance coming up on February seventeenth. That's a Saturday from seven to eleven. That's what Student Council is primarily focusing on right now. And then just an update from National Honor Society as well. The Chili for Charity event is on February seventeenth, and our charity is the Honor Floyd.
Chili for Charity, for charity, that's a, a great event. The art class, um, what, I don't know what they do. They make clay.
Make bowls, is what they do. They make the clay bowls, yeah.
And they're wonderful pieces of art. I have a collection, I think four of them now. That's a, that's a wonderful, and what, that's the seventeenth of February?
Yes, and Mr. Gray had just asked what Chili for Charity is and.
What date, sorry.
Or what, what date it's on, February seventeenth.
So they dance and the charity are on the same day.
What they do is they sell chili and they propose to use the cherry.
Yep.
You're gonna want a bowl, right?
Yeah.
So you eat, you get your fill of chili and then you dance away to.
They're putting it all together in this year.
Sorry to interrupt you, man.
No problem.
What was the problem?
That's all I have right now for Port.
Fantastic, fantastic. Thank you very much for your service. Um, we look forward to, to next month.
Absolutely.
Okay, now we're on to, uh, other board work. And at this time, we want, we were provided the financial audit information uh, last month. Um, the audit that was performed by our, our CPA consultants, um, Whitley, did I say that correctly? Yep. And we had the opportunity to read, to read the reports, and it's, it's, you know, I'm very pleased to, to say that, you know, they had no findings, and, um, Ms. Lynn Knight is to be congratulated on her diligence. And, uh, you know, just come, we're coming out squeaky clean, and it's, it's, it's due to you, Lynn, for your hard work. Can you keep us in line?
Well, I have to say that it was a team effort because every one of the administrators helped me out on that, and as much as they hate me sometimes, it's appreciated.
It's, it's not.
All of them, not me.
We have our moments.
It's not too often to get not a report with no findings, so thank you, Lynn. That's, that's to be, to be celebrated. So at this point, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the financial audit.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. opposed? Motion carried. The, we may have disposed of this item already, the CWSA financial discussion, information only.
I just wanna give you an update on that.
Very good.
Um, it, we're working through a situation with, um, CWSA, uh, and I'm hoping that it's going to get resolved. Um, just to give you an update so you're aware, because this puts you as a board at risk. Uh, there, I met, we, Terry and I met with, um, the treasurer of CWSA probably back in May or June, not exactly sure of what date it was. And we talked about the accounts that are available to them at the district level. They have a, um, a Fund Twenty-One account, which is a donation account, a Fund Sixty account, which is a student activity account, and then they have the district budget. And for all their financial purposes, those accounts should cover anything that they need. Um, probably about a month ago, it came to my attention that a checking account was opened at the Nacusa Port Edward State Bank, uh, in the name of CWSA. I immediately called the bank because if it was opened under, under our tax ID account, we are responsible for that. They verified that it was not opened under our tax ID. However, all of the, there are some transactions running through that account that the district can handle. As a part of my financial responsibility, um, any funds that are going to a program of the district, and CWSA is part, is a program of the district financial-wise. They can have instructional autonomy all they want, but when it comes to the finances, I am required to report all finances of that program into our audit report. Um, I consulted the auditor regarding that account, and I have not heard back from him. I have also had the opportunity to speak to DPI about that account, and they indicated it was highly irregular. Uh, what's to say, the question to, to me was, what's to say that the science department doesn't go to the bank and open up a checking account in their account, in their name? So this could be a domino effect that puts the board at risk, because if something happens to that account, guess who they're coming to? Every one of you. So when we have the efficiencies and the ability to maintain those financial records in the business office, that's what we should be doing. Um, DPI indicated that it was highly irregular and that really we have no leverage. I have no leverage on that, and I understand that. We have to go to the contract between the school board and the Council of CWSA. Um, and I think I'm gonna let Clint and Terry address that, that contract issue.
Well, it doesn't specifically address any financial, um, any financial operations, as to where those financial operations are held. And I know the council is working through a, an amendment, or a series of amendments to that contract, and we need to look at that as far as how we're going to address that on the report.
But my responsibility to the school board was to ensure that you are aware of that account, and if I, if I get word of any other accounts that are open, I will be contacting you again, uh, because that's an account I cannot monitor. I have no, no authority to even look at that account.
So, and we're working with CWSA in the industry, so.
And I, you know, and I do believe that good faith was, you know, on everybody's part, but we need to comply with the standards and the DPI recommendations.
The money came from, I think, a fundraiser.
Yeah, fundraiser.
Which should have been recorded in Fund Twenty-One, the donation account.
But we thank you for that update, and I'm very confident that you guys, that it'll work out, and we appreciate CWSA's, CWSA's understanding. When we get into the.
We're, we're shaking our head. I need a back there, buddy.
Yeah, yeah. When it's, this, you know, this financial compliance is not an easy issue. So thank you very much. Um, next item on the agenda is open enrollment space of, space availability. In the board packets, um, we have a memo that, uh, talks about our, I see it. We have a board policy that states that we will determine the number of our special education spaces available to the district at the January board meeting. We're a little bit behind. But at this point, um, we've had the opportunity to review the, review it, and what, the numbers that we'd like to put on there. And this is, I'm gonna call a motion for this. I'm calling for a motion to place caps on special education enrollment as presented, to place caps on an exclusive virtual charter school not to exceed a hundred and fifty virtual students total, and to not set caps on rigor education students for the open enrollment space ability, availability for two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen school year.
So just so you're aware, a document just came around.
Yep.
This is to make you guys aware, because I can't just say, here's the special ed as a whole. I have to break it up by program and by grade level in our district. So just so you can see, you're gonna see too, the number you wanna pay attention to is that last number because it is service units available. So that's how we calculate it, because when you calculate through, it's not just based on the number of students in our building. I have to go through and calculate for each student. How many service units are they, are they receiving? So and basically then the recommended caseloads are based on the service units of those kids. It's not based on the strict number. So you can have a teacher right now who may have five kids on their caseload, and another teacher have five kids. But we look at what their services are and their units, and that's how everything is calculated. So as you'll see on the, and it'll say service units, any approximation of the number of students, but that's based on the student applying and how many service units they receive.
What resources we have available for this aspect.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I think it's important to note that this is. And, you know, I think it's important to note that this is the first time we're putting caps on this. And it is, it's a, a big decision, but one that we're really forced to make due to financial considerations. And that's financial research and that's difficult, but thank you for that explanation and. So the numbers, as were presented, the special education and the inclusive virtual charter school, not to exceed one hundred and fifty virtual students. And not set caps on rigor education students, that motion is on the floor. Any questions or further discussion?
I'm going to accept that as written. Second.
We have a second, first and a second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, that was a, that was a, thank you Brian and, and all those that went to work on this, it's a very difficult issue when we have to, you know, do, you know. Evaluate the resources we have available, that makes it, makes it hard. We're moving down to policy governance, GP nine. GP, GP nine is board member covenants and this, this was emailed by me. Actually, it was in the agenda. And basically, you know, we are expected to focus on issues, not people or personalities. Respect decisions of the full board, exercise honesty and off communications, make every reasonable effort to protect and promote the integrity and positive image of the district. One another and the district administrator and staff. Those are, that's the, that's the summary of what, what we, the board covenant and we did not have any notifications of any violations of this. So as a result of no violations being found, I, I call for a motion to approve policy governance GP nine, board members covenant. We have a motion, we have a first.
Second.
Second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. OE eleven.
Mr. Black.
Mr. Black.
Yes, this, OE eleven covers the instructional program. Now to sort of differentiate this a little bit from what we've been talking about instructional areas for the last several months, we, for example, earlier, we, this school year, we talked about. Student outcome performance, ELA, math, various other, that's not what this is. This is, the instructional program is detailing a lot of what our system is, what's happens behind the scenes. The work with the principals, the work with the teachers, the work with our instructional staff overall with the program, for example, dealing with making sure to, how well it's aligned to standards, how well it is. It provides opportunities for students to develop new talents, that new and, um, new instructional programs can come online, how do we evaluate these things? Just a lot of the nuts and bolts of the system-ness of how we are building an instructional program that goes forward and is comprehensive and looking at all the various aspects for that. And so we, this is a fairly lengthy document, as you might have noticed, on that particular one and we made some change and you have, in your board packet, you had access to last year's version as well as this year's version, if you care to compare any of those. Quite a few, several were carryovers, there's quite a few updates that sort of basically said, here's the state of where we're at this year, moving forward in the various other areas, so. That, that's essentially what OE eleven is and I'd just like to turn it to you and ask what questions you have.
You know, Nathan, as we've moved along over the last several months, the explanations you provided with regards to curriculum and curriculum development. Instructional. I feel that, you know, I have a good understanding of, and I'm confident in, in the rigor that we have in our system. From all facets and that, you know, the teachers with you and working in teams are really working on getting those instructional strategies in place, is that a fair statement?
Well, it is, and again, I just need to mention particularly the, a large amount of work that is happening certainly at the high school right now, especially reaching out to communities, other members and trying to create new opportun, instructional opportunities, there's. You know, that's a lot of, there's, as, as you, as those you mentioned, I don't want to leave the work of the principals and community members out that's really happening in these areas, that, that certainly needs us showing on it. One thing I would like to draw your attention to, under box, question number seven. It says encourage innovative programs, carefully monitoring and evaluating the effectiveness of such programs at least annually. If you could note, one of the exceptions that we noted last year is that you'd asked for a timeline of what stage of implementation are we looking at various areas and such? And I just wanted to draw your attention that there is a table in section seven of this that pretty much provide that. For example, noting that we are, this year in our second year of integration of the grade, of the ELA workshop modeling grades four through twelve, but we are in our first year in grades K through three. And how that will look going, and sort of toggling that with CPM math, for example, some work that's happening in science, just you have, because, just because new things are happening or old things are happening. This is a way, how do we keep supporting the changes that we already have put in place and keep giving that time and focus and energy as, as it's necessary so we can go, get well at certain things deeply? As opposed to just moving to what's next. And so that is a timetable to keep in mind for the next several years as we put that out to give an idea of, here's the scope of what we're planning to be able to be working on and what we need to continue to support. Because as the nature of this is an annual report, it's important to get a bit of a broader scope to see what we've already, because when we start something new, we've committed to that new thing for several years. And that needs to be reflected in what our work is gonna be doing.
And just as a summary, this may not be fair, but, you know, things that we're looking at, the ELA workshop, CPM math and science. Just, those are, are some, some relatively new approaches for, for us. And really, you know, lining us for the future and, and a lot of work's gone into that. And yeah, the timeline is wonderful, thank you Nathan. And, but we understand, I know things happen, you know.
Okay.
Things can, can happen, but I, I'm fully satisfied, we didn't find any non-compliances from the board. Is there any questions that, that other board members may have of Nathan?
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
Um, this isn't necessarily with this, 'cause I read this whole thing and, and I understand the nuts and bolts of it. But I had an opportunity this past Saturday to spend a day in another high school's classroom. And what I saw in there, kind of, I got a red flag raised. Because there was stuff put on that board, on a bulletin board, that I found very offensive to me personally. And what it boils down to, or what I felt it boiled down to was that teacher was telling these kids what to think, not how to think. And I wanna, you know, know is, is that a problem here?
Now, can I just ask some specific pieces, is, was this in our district that you saw this?
Well, no, 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 it was not in.
Could you give an example?
It was in Wa, uh, Wa, Wa, Wataca High School, it was in their social, one of their social studies, it's in their social studies class. What happened was we were at a chess meet and normally I wouldn't even be in a classroom, but they had a huge basketball tournament going on. So normally we'd be in cafeteria where our teams would be meeting. But because of that, they put us in a classroom. And I felt the bias of that teacher was like, really?
So give an example, 'cause I'm still not making sense of it.
Well, he basically was putting in, and people of faith were idiots.
And I can speak, I mean.
That's all, that's all I'm.
You want me to jump in? Yeah, I'll jump in, I spend obvious, obviously a lot of time in high school classrooms and, um, something specifically, no, it, it isn't happening.
That's all I wanna know.
Yeah, and, um, you know, obviously I'm not in every single second of every single moment, but I can tell you that.
Right, and I get that, but this was put right on the bulletin board.
Yeah, no, and every observation I've had, it's not, that's not happening.
And I, and I wouldn't think so, Nicholas would probably have a board.
No, it's, it's not.
Thank you, you know, but I mean, it was, you know, and even the, the coaches that were with me were like, whoa, look at that.
You didn't take a picture of it?
I didn't think of that until we were on the bus ride backs. But yeah, it was, it was bad.
Well, I have a firm belief that, you know, with, with what the instructional strategies and programs that are put together, that we have such a solid foundation moving forward. But it doesn't really matter what I feel, but I think what we do need to do is, is approve this. Operational expectation OE eleven instructional program as presented. Motion.
Let me make the motion.
A second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. It's a very, you know, deep, deep subject and, you know, one thing that, especially with this month, we've gotten away from as a board is those Thursday meetings. Look at these a little bit more in depth and, you know.
I looked at it.
Yep.
I was okay with it, I mean, I understood, you know, I understood what was going on, so I.
Yep, I just, you know, in the future, I think we need to really focus on those Thursday meetings for some of these, some of these big ones. Um, now we, now we're going on to consent agenda. Uh, anybody wanna mention anything about the employment? We don't need to, if you want to, you're more than welcome.
Both of them actually come through the Special Education Department, but Michelle comes to us with five years' experience from another district. Just looking for a change from working more at the middle level to working at the early childhood elementary level. So very excited to have her on board, I think she'll bring some great ideas of just what's going well, what can we do better, so. Very good, she's already been active in a few committees, giving feedback, giving thoughts, so I'm very excited to have her. And Kelsey is here to support a student at the high school and she brings some unique experience and work. And experience working with adults with disabilities, which is what this student is, so she's really gonna bring that experience and knowledge.
Very good, very good, glad to have her with us. Resignations, anything?
I'll talk about Andrew, Andrew Othmeister, AMS custodian for hours, he is pursuing other avenues, but I do wanna thank him for his service here, I appreciate it, though.
He was a former student as well.
He got another job.
That's fantastic.
Well, that's a, yeah, good attitude.
I told him we'd be calling him back.
There you go.
But.
And Helica? Yeah, and I'd like to jump in there for Helica, Matthias, she's been our Title One Teacher Assistant over the last several years and she's done an exceptional job helping kids learn and be a resource for, you know, the family, our homey family. So I wish her well on this next chapter of her life and I thank you, thank her for her work.
Very much, thank you very much, Angelica, for your dedication to our district. And Nathan?
He served several years. Served several years for a number of years and has resigned. I hope he's continuing as a teacher, obviously.
Thank you, Nathan, yeah.
Thank you, Nathan, and we, we sure, we're sure glad you're with us. And then we have a retirement, that we're gonna be, um, the teacher gonna be retiring at the end of the year. Do you wanna cover that?
Sure, Dave Osterbrink has taught at both the middle school and at the high school for, well, twenty-three years in the district, I believe, and then thirty-two total years of teaching in Wisconsin and Illinois. Has done a, you know, a great job, is someone who we will definitely miss at the high school and, um, yeah, just, yeah, has been, he's, you know, one of the. People that everyone knows at the high school, so.
He's helped a lot of people out, we, I'm looking forward to working with him over the next six months and, you know, keeping in touch.
So recruiting efforts have began, yes.
And his impact is, you know, has been felt at AMS from little projects to linkages with CWSA and there's a, there's a number of different things even at the middle school that they've touched, so.
Yeah, yep. Mr. Mahan, would you mind reading out the donations?
Sure. A hundred dollars from Millie Will Per CWSA. Twenty-four dollars, uh, for backpack for kids, we have twenty-four dollars from Burko Worldwide. Two hundred and forty-five dollars from Bethlehem Lutheran Church, a hundred dollars from David and Carol Sonnenberg. And a hundred and seventy dollars from Sacred Heart Collections.
A big thank you for those dollars, they, they, they mean a lot to those families. At this point, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
I have a question on the retirement, are we, you said that we're recruiting already, are we trying to find someone that can be kind of mentored by Dave before he leaves?
Well, we, we, we talked about that, but it really hasn't, I mean, could that happen?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's a tight field, there are nine graduates coming out from UW Stout, five coming from UW Platteville in the spring. You know, currently we have it posted and.
That's it. Those graduates.
Yeah, it's fourteen in the state.
Yeah, the state, fourteen in the state.
You know, we don't know what we'll get as far as, you know, possibly people who are in, well, people who are in other districts right now, we've had some interest at times from people who've said, hey, you know, when Tech Ed opens. And then also within, people who are working in the field in different capacities who may be interested in teaching. Also had discussions with mid-state around how can we work together, so, all of those different, different avenues. Stout will be having a career day and our intent is to have people there at the career day, so.
Grab one of those nine.
It's gonna be a tough job, tough position to fill 'cause, 'cause a lot of stuff goes on in that department.
Well, a lot of stuff in the breadth of what Dave does is, is quite unique, going from computer programming to welding, to construction, to metals machining. A couple of transcript classes with mid-state, so, yeah, it's a lot, there's absolutely no doubt about that.
Okay, I thank you, everybody, we're up to future meetings, agenda items, the first item, Board Workshop, January twenty-seventh, nine AM to three-thirty PM. We became aware today that, that, you know, the intent was to have a, have a meeting with the administrate, administrators and the board. Just a, a good informal discussion on, on some of the key things that we're looking at. Some of the administrators have, they're not gonna make it, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna shorten the day up. If we can get permission, guys, if we can go eight, eight AM to eleven AM. Um, Terry, Terry is going to be presenting. Information, um, the strategic planning, feedback that we have, we had six meetings. We had three meetings with the public, three meetings with the district. We need to start putting that information together and actually the admin team has been working on it already. Gonna introduce a, a report card of sorts, but, and then we're gonna, Terry's gonna go away and we're gonna get food or talk about him when he's gone. You know, we're gonna, as a board, discuss some issues and then we'll have a follow-up, we'll get Terry back in and have a debrief. One of the things that we're covering in this workshop is the, um, school administrator evaluation forum. Policy that we have right now, the, it, it, the formal summative evaluation will be done in June, as we did last year. But it's start, it's time to start talking about it now. And the other thing that we're gonna incorporate in the discussion that we have as a board is our, our current. are our current practices reflective of what's in the policy governance manual? You know, I could not find a tie-in, a direct tie-in, even with our strategic planning activities. And how we fit that into this, this model. And we look at how we've communicated over the last year, how, you know, that, you know, as a board, how has this worked for us? We want to stay within the boundaries of policy governance. But I think, I think we need to look at some policy changes to reflect where we are or where we wanna be. And again, you know, this is a living document, like, you know, there was changes made, like you said, Nathan, that there were some changes made. This isn't the current document right now that I have in my hands, because there's been changes, so. That's something that we're gonna, I'm gonna try to itemize some of those things before the meeting and get that up to you. Based on the changes in the format, I'm gonna work on that tomorrow. So, any questions on that or concerns?
You said the location was at the high school?
Location's gonna be at the high school. The room down by the cafeteria. Which entrance should we use?
Why don't we use the lower one?
You're gonna let us in the lower one, there you go.
Put it in the end too, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll get you out of there on time, so that'll work out. And what was recommended, you know, I think that it is very important that as a board, that there's opportunity to have, you know, real good discourse with, you know, Terry and administrators. And to honor your time, Terry suggested possibly, you know, Friday F evening or, you know, something of that nature that would possibly fit into your schedule more readily. Because we certainly don't wanna, you know, we wanna respect your.
So like in future years?
Weekends?
Well, even if we have to do a follow-up.
Oh, okay.
From this one. That it might be in the future, you know, in the upcoming months that we have that discussion. Again, we wanna look at how to do policy governance and stay within the confines of that.
Just as a note, is, you know, you had spoken of the Thursday meeting, you know, evening meetings that we have postponed or not.
Yeah.
Found necessary, could that be a venue for this level of updates, a follow-up to it?
It could, yeah.
Something on both lines, we wanna make sure that it's sustainable. Because what we're targeting for is what you're saying, so.
Yeah, what we wanna do, you know, through the, you know, as a board, as consistent as a board, there might be some issues we identify that we're gonna need help with. You know, you're the professional, we represent the stakeholders, the people that voted for us and communicate. And, you know, we can, we can share that information, we do. But, you know, we have to, you're the professionals and I, I, I'm not an educational professional. I was elected, I'm a, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm just, I'm on the board because of, people voted for me and to represent their views and feelings. And I need to be able to express those and communicate those, as well as exercise a fiduciary duties. And come to the, and comment upon any school program. So, that's where we are. Any questions on the, on the board workshop? We're gonna meet, start at eight o'clock.
So breakfast you want? What would you like me to?
Donuts, jelly donuts and frosting, I don't know.
Last time I bought 10 donuts and I think I'd walked out with nine.
You put them all.
For CLC, huh? And I ate the one and I wouldn't have eaten it if they wouldn't have been there. So, Brian, are you gonna eat?
I just want coffee.
Is that a cop joke or?
Huh? You cut off.
I guess it was.
He just assumes there's gonna be donuts. All right, it's all donuts and coffee.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your time today. And Lynn, congratulations again on a fantastic audit.
Congratulations, team.
Team, yeah, everybody give themselves a round of applause. Now our favorite time of the night.
I should handle that one, I'd include your.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.